That we, everybody can have one and then there's an office copy. So that should continue on unless you specifically don't want one.
No, I like that.
Alright.
But I don't wanna take if someone else doesn't have one, because mine's only gonna be here so.
Um, there are five copies here, so.
Plus the one for the office?
I, five for here and then I have one for the office.
Okay, so how are you?
So, um.
Are you Ralph?
Hey.
I'm Sarah.
Oh, let's put our face to the name.
Nice to meet you.
Me too.
Do you have extra copies of your plans?
Yes.
So. I have, I have a couple, I have a couple here.
You kept asking.
I know, I know.
Okay, play Callak, you replied.
I did and he, apparently Mr. and I called again.
Is somebody else missing?
Um, we're missing John Hensman, our chair.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Glenn Chase, if he comes, who's an alternate, John Krebs, who's our planning consultant.
And Miles.
And Miles is gone because I am now the executive chair. So I'm replacing Miles, um, so.
In the back, is that excessive?
Yes, it is. So, so Richard is here taking either the vacancy or Miles's spot and then we've got Sue Nastasi, who was appointed to the other vacancy. So we now have a full board.
That's nice. And you can qualify as executive chair? Are you on this upboard now?
No.
I don't get town administrator.
But I can stand in for that for certain things, yes.
Hi.
Hi, so this is Sue Nastasi.
Sue, yeah, hi, how are you?
Hi.
And this is Kevin Haynes.
I'm Kevin, good to meet you.
Hi Kevin.
Good to meet you.
And this is Richard Cogerty.
Hi, good to meet you.
Hi, Richard.
And this is Sarah, she's our secretary.
And our librarian.
And she's also the library director.
That's right.
It's a small town.
It's a very small town.
Ready hats.
What are these?
Um, have one.
There'll be a quiz next month.
Right, right, right.
Those are state planning regs. Um, it's a manual, reference manual, if there's a specific thing you're not sure of, there's an index and you can try to figure out what the state law says about it.
Oh, maybe I shouldn't have downloaded it. All that, I'm gone. Okay, thank you.
This one has no index. Well, yeah, so.
And it does?
And it does?
Is the entire whole company?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's nice.
Oh, I thought it was two of the right things.
Quickly.
Your, can you see it?
I'm Kevin.
So is this what, my newbie kind of curiosity. Carolyn and, and your name?
Richard.
Richard?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
And then there's John Hensman, our chair, who's not here yet.
Oh, okay.
And then we have, um, John Krebs, who is our planning consultant, who's not here yet.
Oh, okay, and, and maybe Glenn Chase?
He's an alternate who is not here.
Okay. Is he, do you expect him to just wander?
He typically comes.
Oh, good. I know, I adore Wendy.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I can tell by the walk. We need to pull up a chair. Thank you for coming and I'm sorry about all that confusion.
Don't worry.
No, it's, it's me, John, that can tell by walks.
He steals the chair, huh?
Hi.
So, John, you're sitting next to Sue Nastasi, who's one of our new members.
Hello.
John Krebs, how are you?
And across from you is Richard Cogerty, he's our other new manager.
Hello, Richard. Good to meet you.
Hi.
And Sarah, how are you?
There's some plans. Finally. Here's Sue.
And John.
Yes, so, Sue. Sure, 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 so, uh, just to start, this is the Volansford Planning Board, uh, April 2nd, 2019. And so we have a couple of new members, um, Rich and Sue, correct?
Yep.
So I'm John Hensman, I'm the chairman, um, Kevin, who is the vice chair, and Caroline, who's a town administrator, and Sarah, who is our note taker, and John Krebs was a very able technical advisor. So, welcome, we, we appreciate, uh, your volunteering very, very much. So, I see we have nice new books. Alright.
Sue, do you spell your last name?
Sure. N A S T A S I.
N A S T I.
No. N A S T A S I.
There you go.
So I think that the first order of business tonight is gonna be the site plan review, correct?
I was, I was, yeah, you might, um, be a complete in your position as it's a new year.
Yeah?
We'll jump in. I'll second that.
You sure, Ralph, you sure you don't wanna become chairman? Okay, alright. So, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, alright. So, I think that sounds like we have, need to make that motion to them, reappoint Kevin as vice chair. So I'll make that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, alright. And by the way, Sue and Richard, is, should you really enjoy, uh, this, um, I would invite you to, uh, put your names in for chairman next year, I've got no firm hold on this, so. Oh, thank you very much, thank you very much, alright. So you, now, I think we'll talk about the, uh, the site plan review. John, uh, I'm gonna defer to you first and ask if you have any comments or, so, you think you can email before we begin?
Well, I, I know, I think you've been away from your email, but just to explain to everybody, this is, I'm seeing this tonight for the very, very first time. I, I have no idea what's going on, I've never saw these plans, so, um, we're gonna wait.
Do you want me to give a little background?
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Fitz submitted a building permit key. Ralph, why don't you come sit at the table for us?
Sure.
So he submitted a building permit for a home, um, located on Turgeon Way, where he has a business already, a landscaping business. Um, the home will have most of its space dedicated to the business.
Yep.
But have living quarters. So, um, it's an expansion of the business use, but it's also an added use. I would suggest that the home is an accessory use to the business, which I believe is a non-conforming use in that district.
Well, the business is, yes, so the business is non-conforming. It's, it's own, that's own, uh, country residential, isn't it?
Suburban, it's suburban one or suburban two, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Was that agricultural, agricultural, like, block of land, I think?
So agricultural uses are allowed, but it is not an agricultural zone. It's a suburban zone where agricultural uses are allowed, but I think it provides the zoning ordinance, because it, it didn't, it didn't seem to me that it fit necessarily.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, I mean, if you look at the table of uses, I mean, it's, 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 it's a residential zone, whether it's country, residential, or.
So that part is allowed, I don't know if it'll come into play with regard to an expansion of a non, you know, the evolution of a non-conforming.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, this is a trickier one than, it sounds like a very easy thing, but it's not as easy as, I was under, I was of the understanding this was gonna be a home occupation, but you're not living in this house, are you?
There's no house.
So it's an apartment with a shop?
Yeah, there's nothing there right now.
No, I understand that, but you have a plan, you're showing the house.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be a house.
But you're not living in it, it's gonna be a rental.
No, I'm gonna live there.
So, 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 this is, are you abandoning your other business? So, so what's the big?
There's a business there, I'm building a house with a shop, for the business.
So he can live at the business.
The business, the deal will live ten years.
You don't live on site?
No, I don't.
I mean, I don't know what, I don't, I don't, I don't think this is the right course for Ralph to be at. I mean, it, it's clearly an expansion of a non-conforming use, that I don't think you have the right to approve.
Maybe, maybe not, and the reason that Tom Clark thought that this would be the appropriate first step, although he was questioning that, but we, we came to this determination and questioned it after this meeting was all duly noticed and so forth. So, he believes that it is, with, so, to be clear.
Who's he, Tom?
Tom Clark.
Yep.
So, so we were talking about this in light of a recent ZVA case where it was discussed exhaustively, the idea of a non-conforming use evolving, and while our zoning ordinance does not allow non-conforming uses to expand, court, you know, there is, there is, um, court law.
Yeah, yeah, case law.
Case law, thank you, that, that has, that has proven that businesses that are even non-conforming are allowed to evolve.
Sure.
Which suggests that we have to revise the language in our zoning ordinance. So, that being said, under that idea, having had that case recently, he is believing that this is a natural evolution of a business that is non-conforming and that the proposed home would be an accessory use.
Let's not really evolve in the business, if business is gonna continue through this process, and what we're adding to that is a permitted use in that zone.
Right, but what is evolving is the fact that you're adding to a non.
The use is evolving.
Well, that it is not staying, so the, so the business, the existing business use is non-conforming, but that it is evolving in the sense that you are adding a structure to it. So it is expanding, but it is expanding not necessarily in a non-allowed manner, but in an evolution.
But not, not in a business sense, but more towards the residential sense, if that's a permitted use in that zone. And the business is not evolving, or being abandoned, or being altered, the business is remaining.
No, but it's expanding because the home, it seems, and Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong, is, um, 2,400 square feet, 1,600 to be for the business and 800 square feet to be living quarters.
Okay. So part of the construction is for business purposes?
Well, it's really mostly, by square footage, for the business.
Then I can see it more evolving.
I'm sorry that you guys had to come for this meeting. Probably not the best person to come to. And I'm, I'm really concerned, we have another problem, and that is that the chairman of our board happens to sit on the zoning board. And I'm concerned about John, I don't, I don't know if you wanna weigh in or you wanna stay the heck out of this thing. You know, I, I just don't, I, I'm not your zoning officer, I don't, I think the selectmen technically are the zoning officers. I don't think Tom is, Tom is a code officer.
Well, he, he helps to interpret such matters on behalf of the select board. But you're right, he's not the deciding authority necessarily, but I would say that the ZVA probably is, if this board decides that.
Absolutely, I mean, the zoning board is, is clearly the board. Uh, my, my opinion is that I just don't think that adding a, I, I'm not saying this is a bad idea, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna say anything, but I don't, I don't think this board has the authority to, um, grant, grant the approval to expand a non-conforming business without, without the approval of the zoning board. And, and that doesn't, you know, that doesn't, and I, and I don't really agree with Tom's position that, you know, yes zoning, yes, non-conforming uses can expand, can expand, that doesn't mean that a, a home occupation, a home business with four employees can turn into a Liberty Mutual, that's not, you know, but can they add an employee, maybe? Yeah, perhaps, could they expand the footprint of their, of their, of their office building that might be in a residential zone? Very, in a very minor way, sure, that, that, those are the expansions that, that case law has supported. But, um, you know, I don't, I don't, I just don't think the zoning, the planning board should be the board to make this determination. I mean, it's, this is a pretty complicated zoning issue that really ought to be, I think.
I think it inevitably is gonna go to the ZVA, I think, at some point, but it's the starting point.
I mean, this, this site plan review is gonna take two seconds by the planning board. If the zoning board says it's an allowed expansion of a non-conforming use, it's a pretty, it's obviously, it's a big lot, it's no, it's a, it's a no-brainer. But I don't think the, the use, I, I think the use can't, I don't think you have the right to approve the use. But I'm, you know, again, I'm looking at this tonight for the first time, I've never talked to Tom. I know where Turgeon Way is, I drive by it every day. And I'm certainly not trying to complicate matters, but I don't, I, you know, I, I don't think you have the authority to approve it.
Would it matter to you the use of the business portion of the proposed structure relative to the existing use? And how, you know, like the square footage impact on the square footage?
I can tell you when mixed building was permitted to expand without, with a building permit, the planning board went ballistic. And that was a bad mistake that the selectmen learned. The selectmen learned never state that they, that they should never allow mid-construction, to build that building without zoning board approval. It was, it was a horrible mistake, the board of selectmen acknowledged it, said it would never happen again. I don't think this is a whole lot different. This is, you know, this is a new building on, you know, on, on a lot. A new building with a residence and a shop in a non-conforming, in a non-conforming use, so I don't, I don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know under what authority Tom thought the planning board to approve it.
I don't think that he was necessarily sure that they could, but it was, it was about the complexity of the issue.
Oh, without doubt, without doubt.
Some, you know, some, some further thought, you know, while at the same time he's noticed for this meeting. So, um, rather than cancel this duly posted, posted meeting and defer him, you know, he might as well go through this board and hear its thoughts. So, I, I think it is likewise not completely clear to Tom, and I think he would be open to an argument, such as you're suggesting.
I think, I personally think I'm inclining with John on this, that I don't think we do have the authority to do what's been contemplated here.
So was this noticed as a preliminary consultation?
No, it's like fully noticed.
Fully, but as, as a, as a site view, not a site view, but.
Yes.
No, that's the area, the application's first.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he was, Ralph was told to submit a site plan application.
So, I'm gonna get this done right here.
Sure. That's the, those are house plans? Ralph, this is.
I like the site, I like the design.
Yeah, just. And which, which lot are you buying?
Two, it's one here, two.
Two, okay. And you, where, and your business is on that, that lot, you, oh, you already own that lot?
Yes.
Okay.
The business has been there for 10 years.
Yeah, yeah. And what's on three?
It's, uh, nothing.
Oh.
There's nothing, lot is wrong here.
It's wrong, yeah. And that, what's on here?
It's, uh, Kim's angle there.
Right, 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 yeah.
And this shed is, is existing currently?
Yes. There's a, there's an old shed off Curly.
See, this is a different lot, though, I was looking at this shed here, could you, you're talking parcel two, lot two?
Yes. That's, that's, that was the butcher shop.
So, Ralph, help me out here, 'cause I remember when this, I think I remember when this subdivision was approved, it wasn't that many years ago, 12 years ago. You've been there 10 years. So, did you, the, the planning board never, you never got, you just bought the lot and moved down to it? Okay.
I was under the understanding that it was agricultural when I bought it.
Well, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't even know if, is, I don't know if it's legally non-conforming, I, I don't know if, I mean, if, if that was 10 years ago, the zoning hasn't changed in 20 years.
No, I don't think so.
So, it's not, it's, I don't, I don't, unless there was something, this subdivision was created in 2007. So I would assume Ralph bought the lot shortly after the subdivision.
Well, I'm involved, kind of, before it was done, yeah.
So, Carolyn, you see my, I mean, now you see my, I don't, I mean, to be, a non-conforming business, you had to predate zoning. This, there's no approval for this business at all. I mean, it was, it was, it was only 10 years ago that it started there, where there was loot moved there.
Just as in the side, I had a letter from the select board last year, or the year before, I don't know exactly, it was, you know, saying that town was fine what I was doing underway, when they took it out of current use. The board didn't unrecognize it.
No, and I, I hope you understand, I'm not trying to find a way to submarine this thing, I'm trying, trying to find a, you know, trying to find a, you know, a way to fix it, but it's not, the way it's gone hasn't.
And Mr. Fitz, what would be the context of the select board sending you that letter, why would they?
They took the land out of current use.
Oh.
They found that the use of the land did not qualify for current use, so they required a part of it being moved.
I see.
Followed them.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But at the time, you didn't say anything about it, that the use was permitted, it was just that it didn't qualify for current use, that's probably what the letter said?
It, the letter was really pertaining to the use as to whether or not it was allowed as, you know, under current use regulations. It was, it was not about the use itself.
If you were involved in subdivision from the, from the beginning, I'm assuming you know the, personally bought the lot from the.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I almost just wonder if it's, if it's only, if a variance is the way to go and clean it right up to allow the use, but, you know, I can't.
I mean, it sounds like that's the way it, it should go to me, but what do you think, Kevin?
I mean, what's with the variance?
What's that?
I mean, what's with what you had said, but variance, I said.
Well, I, I don't think you can expand a non-conforming use that wasn't, it's none of, I don't think it's a non-conforming use.
Right.
It's, it was not permitted, so it's, I think a variance is the way to go and, you know, you've been there forever, obviously, the neighbors don't care. So, I wouldn't think, although.
I better be, I better be careful.
I'm gonna weigh some, anything.
I, I didn't say that.
You know.
A gentleman in the back wants to be recognized, anyone have a, a gesture for me to recognize a gentleman in the back? You can state your name, sir, and your name and your address.
Robert Meehan, I'm his next door neighbor over there, I own the other half of that.
Okay.
And I'm real familiar with this, 'cause I own the other side.
Can you show us where you?
Lot three.
I own this one.
Okay.
And you, there's nothing there?
No, there's nothing.
Okay.
What is, what is your address?
My street address is 457 West Street. Ralph's been a great neighbor, and everybody knew what he wanted to do from the time he bought, Kim, Amen, me, and you know what? Whatever it takes to get him this thing, we'd highly support. And I know the other neighbors around, same way, nobody's opposed to this, I have to see this, and I'm gonna come and speak on it.
Alright, well, thank you, uh, and I think that, just to be clear, we're now trying to prevent, we're just trying to find the appropriate legal mechanism under which this can be considered.
So just to explain to the board, Rich?
Richard, yeah.
Richard and Sue, how this normally works. Normally when a project comes in, they would send the, the engineer, the surveyor would send me the plans a couple weeks in advance, I would review them, I'd give you a written review of what, what I think should happen, you don't need to listen to me, but I, I'll go through the whole thing and, and make recommendations. This is a case where I didn't, I didn't know what was going on until, until I saw it tonight. Generally, they're not this complicated, usually it's a, it's a, it's a subdivision in a residential zone that's pretty easy, or a, you know, a commercial, a site plan in a commercial zone, you know, so this is a little bit, I know it's a small project, but the, the legal issues are a little bit more complicated, so, they normally don't go like this, so, don't run. But, as John said, I, I think that, you know, I, I want you to know, Ralph, I, I don't, I hate when this happens. But I, because I, I don't want you to think that I'm trying to, you know, just look through the book to try to find reasons to, to say no to this thing, but I also don't think this board can approve something or act on it unless you have the legal authority, and I don't think you do. And I, you know, I, I'm surprised Tom didn't catch the fact that this is really not a non-conforming use, it's, it's not. You know, I mean, it doesn't. It was never permitted there, and, and I'm not saying anything, you know, I'm not saying it couldn't be. And clearly a landscaping business is the worst, you know, you don't, you're not gonna buy commercially zoned property in downtown at all, I'm trying to run a landscaping business, you know, it's kind of, it's a little bit, it's sort of an odd business in the sense that you take, take up, you know, a lot of room and, it's not, it's not a, you know, brick and mortar business, but.
I had the business in the residential area 40 years in Rollington.
Yep.
You know, so. And I was a member of this board back in the 70s, so I'm familiar with what you're doing.
Yeah.
My big question is, my timeframe. You know, you wanna go to the zoning board and then, after the zoning board, you have to come back here?
Well, I, I think first of all, in terms of the zoning board, you could probably get in the zoning board in a relatively, what's, what's his timeframe, Sarah, for, we don't meet regularly, the zoning board doesn't meet regularly, but we just met last week or the week before?
Yeah, I mean, usually within two to three weeks, we can schedule something.
And then, well, that's a month, and then I have to come back here in another month?
Well, but conceiv, but this is, I, I'm not.
I'm just, I'm only gonna make a, I, I, this is what I can see happening. This board could continue this application, so you don't have to re-know it until the, the regular meeting in May. So a month from, approximately a month from, a month from today, which would allow you to go to the zoning board, get whatever relief you need from them, and come back to us. So conceivably, in, in a month, you know, a month and a few days, you could, you could walk out of here with the approval. That's, that's predicated on the zoning board.
Yeah, Sue, we have, I, I can't, I mean, I can't make any promises, we have a meeting scheduled for another hearing.
April 16th, right?
Yeah, so potentially, if you've got an application in right away, it would give me time to notice it so that you can do it on the same day, which would get your decision to get back here for the main hearing.
That'd be fine. And the other matter on for the 16th is a relatively straightforward matter, I don't.
It's not complicated.
Problems, problems with that one at all.
So Sarah, Ralph came, saw you, or Carol, well, I don't know who he, how he does it, but tomorrow, if I'll an application?
Yeah, I mean, I have all, I have all the labels, I have, it would be easy to do.
With that, with that?
That'd be fine, I'm just, you know, timeframe.
So, I think.
So he's, he's like a, what's that?
Do you have to open the hearing and then?
I think John did, but he, he probably should formally open it, yeah.
Uh, so, is, are any members of the public here who'd like to, uh, comment on this, this file? Alright, so I think, um, I would entertain a motion to continue the, this, the hearing until our next meeting in May?
Some of.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So, so Ralph, the only thing I would tell you is that if for some reason the zoning board can't hear you between now and whenever the meeting is in May, the first week of May, you need to let someone know, and probably John or Caroline know, that you wanna continue the meeting until June. Otherwise, we'll just deny it, and, you know, if we don't know what's going on, we'll, we'll just let it go. So let someone know if you, you know, if you can be ready. But, no, I, I'm sure you will, it sounds like you know what's going on, but I just don't want you to be disappointed that, you know.
Sue, just to clarify, I have to come and fill out a, a different application. So, just to clarify, I have to come and fill out a different application?
Yes, I actually am going to email you the application for the variance, and then fill it out, bring it into Caroline, and then I'll get the.
And then she can notice it, or determine whether or not there's enough time to notice it for that meeting, or whether or not a different meeting will need to be set.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't, I'm just about to notice the meet, the other meeting, hearing, so it's plenty of time.
Does this all have to be posted, like, this meeting wise?
But she's, Sarah's ready to do that.
Yeah, I just didn't know, all of mail is having to go up?
Yeah, but you can piggyback on applications. But then, you know, the final thing is, Ralph, and I don't know who, I know that you have something from Atlantic Survey and something from Civil Consultants, but what we really want is, if you look at the site plan, or, what the planning board's gonna wanna look at is just, you know, where the house is going on the lot. And, well, okay. And then, you know, an idea of like where vehicles are parked, just in the, you know, we sort of need to know what, you know, what's going on in the lot. So I don't think you need to hire a surveyor to do it, you could probably just draw it on the plan, saying this is where the vehicles are parked. And I don't know what you have out there, I don't know if you have mulch piles, or, you know, whatever. But you at least ought to show the plans of the board and say, yeah, we, you know, we know what's going on. The zoning board may even want that, or maybe photographs, if you have them, that might be helpful, or, you know, but the more information.
People have some of it right there, so you can kind of get a purview of sort of how it lays on the land.
This, the piles and field, we compost, we compost everything.
But, I mean, it's not even visible from Rollins Road, it's really where you would wanna have that type of business. To have already heard from Butters, it's been a positive ten years, that certainly carries some.
Yeah, it doesn't look very, and what's over here, what's over here, Ralph?
Nothing, field.
So what's this stuff?
That's truck bodies, this door, that's where the house is going, right there.
Okay.
And those will be gone.
This is your shed?
Yes.
There's some cement all that, containment area.
The shed he's talking about?
No, that's, no, that's, that's a different one, that's.
That's something different?
Yes, that's a containment for wood to solve.
Okay, and where, you say the house was going back?
Right with the container.
Okay.
So that, so yeah, that shed, there's a couple, so there's a couple of buildings on either. There's a couple of buildings that existed, we added the, you gotta contain salt undercover, so, yeah.
You are up there in the woods, aren't you?
Yes, I mean, there's nobody around, I can see the top of this house here, and that's it. And that's the other thing, is I have a lot of equipment up there, and there's nobody there, and all that's.
Now, the neighbors are very watchful, they gotta have somebody there.
There's some trails up in there, too.
There's an ATV trail that's across the corner by the end, and goes on the lot. Which is closed, you know, the light's, you know.
May eighteen fifteen, right?
I'm not sure what they, they rounded it up and we called, and they come right home and closed it, but pretty good. So we're good?
Yeah.
We all set?
Thank you for your time.
So I guess somebody was making a motion to continue, unless it.
We already made a motion.
Oh, you didn't?
Okay. It was voted on approved.
I'll bring the application in to you tomorrow. Or can I just email it back?
You can, go on.
Yeah, you could do that.
If you could copy me, that would be helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Night, Dan.
That's all right.
Those are my correspondents.
So what you see, what we're normally doing, you know, something like this, is someone's coming before us with a plan, and they might, will be checking it for setbacks and drainage, lighting.
Wetland encroachment.
Wetland encroachment, all these types of things, and so this was, and John is our technical advisor, he's got a great deal of expertise, and we rely on his great knowledge, and so this was kind of an odd start for you folks in the sense that whether or not, you know, this matter even belonged here, so. Anyways, all right, so, next on the agenda is?
Nothing. I think we'll admit which got done, and I forgot some time, so we'll have to table, maybe table this till next.
All right, we'll table those until next time.
Correspondents.
We have none.
None. And then just other business, if there's any.
Well, since, I don't think we're prepared to do it tonight, but since we have two new members, I don't know what the agenda is like, gonna be like in May, but I do think that we ought to take a half an hour or so to sort of run through, just so you guys sort of understand what your, you know, what your roles are.
I kinda like that idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming you've never done this before?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, and I haven't seen you milling around the meetings at night, so, you know, and it doesn't need to be just me, but, you know, I can put together something, and maybe the board can explain, and maybe we can even pull out some other site plans and some subdivisions, and just sort of show you what we do, what a typical meeting would entail. I don't know where, if you're both, you know, if you've been in Rollins for a long time, but, you know, unlike the surrounding towns, for some reason, Rollinsford hasn't grown like everybody else, so we don't get, our agendas are relatively light. I would suspect we've missed a couple meetings in here, because we have nothing, right? About two, I think, on average, so, you know, whereas in Dover, they meet twice a month, and they have long agendas, and, you know, Lee, Madbury, they're all busy, but for some reason, Rollinsford is a sleepy town, there's not a whole lot of subdivision activity happening. And we, I don't even know how many applications we get in Europe, five or six, maybe, seven?
We had twelve last year, but some of it was.
Some of them are small, a little lot line adjustment, anytime you, anytime you move, anytime a lot line is moved in New Hampshire, you need planning board approval, unlike Maine, where surveyors have the right to move lines. So if someone wants to adjust, make a minor adjustment to a lot line between their lot and their neighbor's lot, they need our approval. So those, that could be an application, but it might take five minutes. And then we might have something as complicated as the Blue and Mill that took four months, five months, I don't even know how long it took. You know, it was at the zoning board, and I was at the, actually, it was the planning board, and I went to the zoning board, and came back to the planning board. So, you know, there's those.
Is that how differently goes to the zoning?
No, the way it's supposed to go is that the planning board cannot approve and shouldn't accept an application unless the application satisfies all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So in this case here tonight, I think there was, I don't know what happened, but there was a, Tom Clark, who's the building inspector, and does some code enforcement for the town, I think felt that this was, the purview, it was the planning board's purview to deal with. We obviously disagreed, and that's rare that that happens, Tom's done this a long time, he's an expert. So we typically, when he sends, when he sends something to the planning board, usually it's the right board. The Blue and Mill was another sort of a messed up situation, where we got knee deep into the, or maybe neck deep into the review, and we realized there was a zoning ordinance that we thought we had changed, that we didn't change. So they had to go back, it was a density, it was density, Sarah, wasn't it? They want more density to be allowed.
What's density?
How many units they could have per acre. So they had to go back to the zoning board, I don't, and it might have been more than one meeting, I don't remember.
Because there's just one.
One meeting? So that's not, that's not the norm, usually, you know, if an application comes to us, and we realize they need zoning relief, we don't accept the application, we just say, go away, get what you need, come back.
Can I ask, what that mill you were talking about?
Yeah.
What mill is it? I mean.
It's the mill right over there.
Across the street and halfway down the hill?
It's referred to as the Blue and Mill, it's.
It was Blue and Manufacturing for many, many years. Yeah.
They're expanding their park a lot, they're digging back into the bank a little bit, they've actually begun that work, all the asphalt's gone now, goodbye in a day or two or so.
And so that was a manufacturing facility, it was, in fact, it was Rollinsford's largest employer for many, many years. When they stopped manufacturing there a while ago, it sort of turned into a warehouse, I think. And somebody bought it, and they converted the upper three floors, three floors.
I think there are four floors, and then the fifth is the bottom, which is.
The bottom is gonna be commercial, retail, they don't really know, the owner doesn't know, commercial of some sort. And the top three floors are gonna be residential, so that's, so that came to us. God, I can't think of another, you know, again, we just got done doing a subdivision that was, had some controversy to it.
Clement.
Clement, right, Clement Road, and it was controversial because it was, because we allowed duplexes on any lot, on any lot created in the town, and a lot of the people surrounding it were like, whoa, what is this, you know, they weren't aware of it. And so, and there were some other issues that we had to resolve.
We had to pay some attention, but he came back to us after the fact.
He wants to single family.
To change it back.
To change it back.
We get those, yeah, we do get some that are one meeting in and out the door.
Yeah.
You know, unchallenged, uncontested, you know, with no negative input from residents, you know, we get those as well.
And then we had the Chinburg subdivision right over here in town, and that was a lengthy review, I don't know, five, four, four or five months, maybe? You'd know, it was, it was, it was a few months. So that's, that's sort of the range, you know, anywhere from four or five months to, and that's, I'd say that's a very unusual one.
Yeah.
The typical review is, I would say, two months, you know, in large part because someone comes in, and we realize that there's some things they need to do, so they have to come back, just to sort of tidy up the application, and then we'll prove it, but.
And what's fortunate, too, is any developing town usually uses the same handful of similar engineers that know what we're looking for, and prepares plans accordingly, they know how we like to see it, you know, I mean, and Hamburg, who's someone I'm very familiar with, who's ran similar projects. But we've had some changes along the way with how we've zoned the mills downtown, and, you know, also trying to keep an open mind on broadening our tax base and changing some of our zoning as far as uses to maybe help something future wise.
And we had an odd one recently, right down on Oak Street, that sliver of land that runs along the railroad track. That was slated for self-storage, wasn't it?
Well, it went from the ZBAs to self-storage, it was denied, and now it's gonna be duplex, a duplex.
And now it's gonna be.
Or two duplex.
Two duplex lots. And that took, actually, we did that in one meeting, because I, I basically said to the planning, which is something I don't normally do, I said to the planning, they were represented by a really good attorney that works, that lives in Dover, has done a fair amount of work in Rollinsford, and an engineer that does a lot of work in Rollinsford, and in a baseline meeting, I said it wasn't gonna fly. They retooled the project, came back, before they even got to the planning board, and the planning board, I think, liked it, and it got approved in one night, so.
Well, but for its first stage, which is, you know, is that site appropriate for this proposed use? And that was like the end of the conversation for that first step, and then they have to go to ZBA because it's a nonconforming lot. And then it'll be back to the planning board to talk about particulars.
Well, actually, it won't, if they get a variance, it doesn't need to come back, because the subdivision, it's done. They don't need a site plan review or anything, it's just, if the zoning board approves it, they're on their way. They wouldn't have to come back to us, because it's already two lots of record.
Two lots of record, but I don't think this body approved the merger of the lots, like, it was about, that was noticed as a conditional approval.
Yeah, they didn't work yet.
They didn't get any approval, it was just, it was just whatever it took to send it to ZBAs.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, all right, okay. But if that gets ironed out, you know, we, I think everybody in the board, it was, actually, I thought it was a good result. Everybody was happy with the way it worked out, I don't know if it's, I was in that's one of the design board.
So, some of the things we had is C and J came in front of us, and they wanted to add a building for washing, I believe, their buses in storage. And then on the, the way, I can't think of the name of, across the bridge, the gentleman that owns Woodworth Gardens wanted, in the recycling, wants to put in a, came in for approval for self-storage.
And it's approved.
We approved that, and, you know, things like lighting and.
Bathroom facilities.
Parking, right.
Yeah.
It's unoccupied.
What was it, Dan?
It was on Greenview Drive.
Right, Greenview.
You know where the, do you know where Greenview Drive is?
Oh. You know you drive over the old pass by Summersworth?
I do.
It's the road right here.
Is that a pretty little expiring thing?
That was January last year.
I don't know, we should look into it, because he was like, if we got it approved, we're gonna destroy it.
You go and buy the fire extinguisher, and then you go over the old pass by Summersworth, just as you come off the overpass, and that road that goes back.
That was two thousand seventeen.
Been up there a while, have you?
Yeah, I just didn't know that in the neighborhood.
It's not a neighborhood, it's a commercial, it's a commercial subdivision, I think actually Kevin made work out there, but it is a pretty cool facility, it's an oil recycling facility out there.
I know where that is.
Yeah, that's at the very end of the road.
Yeah, I have.
So self-storage was obviously before the end of the road.
In the field.
But it got approved, and I guess I, it never got built, I guess that's something we need to look at. Because I thought they were hot to trot on that thing, I don't know what happened.
Price of steel.
Yeah.
There was Susi subdivision, he had a business, which is no longer a business, and his home on the same lot, on Portland Ave. And that's nonconforming, because both of the businesses are within the one hundred foot setback from Portland Ave. But he wanted to split that lot in half, and that was given, I believe, conditional approval, but he never came back and showed that he, yeah, finalized it, met his conditions, so we haven't signed off on that, but we heard that last year.
So last year, you heard one, the lot line endorsement, Cambo?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Lot line merger was Jensen, forefront preliminary consultation.
And then there's the Tarian subdivision on Silver Street, put a house in back of an existing house.
Yep.
Right in front of San Terry.
Yep.
Get Tarian Pepin's site plan review.
Okay, did that, did that, did that get my line? Dan Pepin?
I think he's upset.
He's upset, okay.
But as far as, a question we had before is following up, follow up in policing, I mean, there was supposed to be some asphalt placed around that back building there, that was part of our approval in.
Yeah, like, at least the handicap, there was lighting, parking.
And to keep vehicles off the gravel, and, you know, policing is one thing that we, because we really don't have any one to, I mean, it's all volunteer board and everyone's.
So if you bring those things to my attention, then we can send a letter and get Tom Clark on it and work on it. It's more about people noticing, you know, for now, that's our implied strategy, which is highly, like, insufficient. We don't have a, you know, we don't have enough staff to actually patrol things that have been approved and patrol businesses, for example, and make sure that everybody's.
So let's talk about, let's talk about Dan Pepin, he gets approved in November, the paving, I think it was November, or February, last fall. Paving plants are closed, so I'm assuming Tom gives him a billing permit to, he needed renovations to the building, right?
I think he did, he was modifying it.
He was modifying, I think he was making, I'm sure he needed a billing permit. So what's the trigger to go back out this spring and say, okay, now that you're occupying the building, when is the parking lot gonna be paved, when is the lighting gonna get installed?
Well, and what is that checklist for all the things, except for the plan itself and the minutes? But, you know, we don't really have a mechanism for checking that, and also, the plans and the planning files remain a mess, so it's not.
Well, like in Dover, for instance, we'll just pick on Dover, because they're close to us, they, Dan Pepin would put up fifty thousand dollars in cash or a bond or something, surety, to make sure that it got done. He'd be pretty excited to get his money back, so he'd make sure that work got done, because usually, it's, you know, a hundred fifty percent of that.
That makes sense.
With something like a small business like Pepin's, you're probably not gonna make them do that, because it was probably ten thousand, I don't know.
But something to incentivize somebody to follow.
Or, or, just to make sure the town, because it's, I happen to sit on the zoning board in my town, I've sat on the zoning board for nine years in the town I live in, and there's nothing more aggravating than determinately making decisions. And there's nothing more aggravating than, than determinately making, making decisions and, and that are predicated on certain things happening. And then a year later, you realize those things never happened, because they slipped through the cracks. And this board spends a lot of time looking at a light or paving or something, or drainage, and, and then all of a sudden, we realize it never happened, because there was no follow-up. It can be aggravating, so I don't, maybe, maybe there's something, maybe it'd be, it's time for a joint meeting with, you know, the board selectman and Tom to say, how can we, short of, you know, making people put up money to guarantee these things are done, is there another mechanism? Because there's a lot of small business owners in town that may not have the ability to put up twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
But even on that same property, we, we had to, we were unsure when it was previously approved, remember there was a Quonset hub? And we were like, was that supposed to be taken down, is that supposed to, we, we weren't even sure, you know?
So we need like something in their, in their property file that says what was approved and.
Isn't there a timeline?
Well, so, so this, this board is not, this, this board is, is, our juris, our jurisdiction ends the day we state the plan. That's it, we're done.
Right, but this board can still create a list of, you know, yes, but it can also provide lists or, or some kind of description or something that could, you know, before it's all flagged.
That's why I think it'd be nice to have Tom in here, because most of the projects require a billing permit. So if Tom was given a copy of the approved plan with the conditions of approval, for instance, then he'd say, okay, before you give them a certificate of occupancy, I'm gonna make sure X, Y, Z is done, and all, and all the things shown on the site plan are done. Now, let's, it's February and they, they need to pave their parking lot, I'll give them a conditional occupancy permit. And then by August fifteenth, I want all the stuff done when we can pay and we can landscape, something like that.
So, so, right now, I know of what happened in recent history, so that when we get a building permit, that's a flag for me, and we're pretty good that way. That doesn't cover things like, did Pepin pave his parking lot, where, you know, or is he choosing not to follow up with the conditions? And he's just not going to build, you know, submit a building permit, because he's just not ready to, or he's.
Well, that's why I said if we give Tom, I think it'd be helpful to have Tom in here, because he may, he's worked in, I know he's worked in Dover, I don't know where else he worked, but he's, he's done this for, you know, he's done this a long time. He may say, give me a copy of the site plan that's approved, or whatever it is, the approved plan, the conditions, and I, you know, and, and that, that would be, that'll be the, he'll, he'll make sure those things are done before final occupancy or something. And, and in the case like Dan Pepin, I think he's also an inspection station.
He was applying for that, I don't know if he got that, but I don't recall that.
But every year, every year that's renewed, either Tom or selectman.
I think it may be, I don't know that it's every year, it may be like a five-year thing or something. So, I, I get what you're saying, and I completely agree with you, and I think we, we can work on that. It would also be helpful if this body can impart upon people, and I don't know if it's legal, but can we give people a deadline by which, a reasonable deadline by which they will meet their conditions, or they revert, or, or something. And paving, we would wanna be, you know, sympathetic to the fact that you can't do it in the winter, you know, you have to be, you know, compassionate about it, but also have something for Tom to enforce.
But at the least, we didn't even have a town administrator, now we have the benefit of, of that position, obviously yourself, I mean, I, I think we are developing in these, these ideas that we have.
But in all our years, we've, we've never had a meeting with Tom, so it may be beneficial.
I'm with you, we can do it.
If he's willing to, you know.
I'm sure he is, we can do that.
And, because we wanna help him, and I'm sure he wants to try to help us, which reminds me, Paul's Integrity Auto has cars double parked over there that are not allowed. So that may be who, someone to follow up on that, because it's.
But we ought to be sensitive to the fact that if we're gonna jump on him about that.
Because that was another lengthy review we went through.
But keep in mind, we, we were all about him not selling cars, and at his previous original shop, there's been cars for sale.
And we sent him a letter, and Tom's been on that.
Is it Paul's doing that, or is it somebody else?
It's Joe's garage where Paul's Integrity used to be on the corner of Prospect.
Oh, I know where it is.
And also Pepin, who said, of course I'm not gonna be selling cars, had a truck out for sale as well.
Yes.
Well, that truck is still there, just the for-sale sign.
The for-sale sign.
But it's on Craigslist, so, you know, you'll figure.
But it's still there, yeah, exactly.
But that's what I'm saying, it, you know, we're, we're gonna totally enforce things on Paul that, and granted, we did make Joe shoot into the same situation. And quite honestly, Paul probably didn't need to go to the degree that he did when he was at his old shop, because that was, that's exactly what Joe's doing. And Joe just simply put open sign on the door and, and ran with it.
But yet the site review carries, because it's the same use, different owner, same use, so whether or not.
Well, we never had, there's no site review on that, on the old Paul's, on Paul's old site, that's just a.
This is where you wanna transition, I don't.
No, I don't, I don't think so. Well, I never saw it, I've been here for years, too many years, I, we never looked at that old site.
I agree.
I, really?
No.
We, I think we'd have found stuff if we looked at that old site, I can be honest with you.
I, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's been a garage since the beginning of time, probably pre-zoning, I would assume.
It is, I bet it is.
There's no, I don't, I, we, I, in all my years, I've never.
But there was a question of abandoned use at some point, had to set vacant for some time.
Yes, and it went through, and it went through a process, and it was discussed about selling.
It may have been a zoning process, not the plan.
But I don't believe it was a full site review, I don't, I don't believe we did full site review on that.
Okay, so, just tell me what that means, somebody used it for, if it could have.
So, so the way, the way our ordinance works, and it, it may not be particularly legal, our ordinance says that a non-conforming use. I think we have a year. Oh, in the event that a non-conforming use is discontinued for three hundred sixty-five consecutive days, it shall not be reestablished except, except by a variance granted by the zoning board or just. There's been Supreme Court cases in New Hampshire that, that would invalidate that, for very specific uses. I'm familiar with one, because I was the town planner at Conwy, New Hampshire, years ago. Somebody had an ice cream freezer facility in a residential zone where Ben and Jerry's was stored. And it was a unique building just to that use, it took them five years to rent it out. And, and someone said, we have the same thing, we have a year, and the court said, no, it, it might take them twenty years to find a suitable tenant. So that, the, the three hundred sixty-five days is, is kind of not, you can't really hold anybody to that. But the, the more important language that the courts have said is that if there's an intentional act to abandon a use, let's say Paul's, I think, what's it called up there?
Joe's.
Joe's, let's say Joe said, geez, we can't rent this thing out, we're gonna, we're gonna convert, it just happened. This happened in the old bar, what's the bar right down here?
On Sherwood Street?
What, the Sportsman's Club? So a woman wanted to reopen the Sportsman's Club, I don't know a whole lot about it, but we heard that she had converted into apartments, is that right?
Upstairs, yeah.
So there was, if there's an intentional act to, to abandon or to change something, you know, if he wanted to convert that into apartments, or, or the owner of the Sportsman's Club cut it up into apartments, they can't go back and say, well, you know, we're still grandparenting, you can't hit it both ways. So that's sort of what we're talking about, but the, the fact that there's an approved site plan, there's, I don't believe there's an approved site plan for Joe's Garage, because it's so old.
You mean it's never been approved?
It's never been approved.
Ever, ever.
Mick's Construction.
There's no approved site plan from Mick's. Non-conforming use means something that predated zoning, was in existence before the zoning laws came around.
That was nineteen seventy-one.
Before.
May it was, or.
Yes.
Nineteen seventy-one.
But we see more than our fair share of that, believe it or leave here.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's residences in places that shouldn't be residences, which would take up a long time of road.
And, and we can't, and I would say definitely nineteen seventy-one is the date, it's the date it should be, like, I'm assuming Mick's has been announced since before seventy-one, but there's no.
Well, right, so predated zoning, so nineteen seventy-one is the mark, and that's when zoning, you know, the zoning ordinance was originally established, so.
So before that didn't matter.
It didn't matter, and there may have been something that was built in seventy-eight that, that sort of slipped through the cracks, I, I don't know how we'd ever prove it after thirty, after forty years, but the, the law says if, if it was built before we had zoning, or before the zoning changed to not allow it, it would be non-conforming.
My other question would be this, if you don't mind my asking, nobody's complained about that building now, it's been there for how long?
Which building?
Joe's. So now it's there, and now you bring it up, hey, this is not.
I didn't bring it up.
No, I'm just saying.
Whatever brought it up.
So, so is it, this board's job to go look at that and say?
Well, it, it's, it's ongoing, it's existing, it's in place, well, we run into things like that too with, you know, uses of, of junkyards and tow yards. And we run into situations of, on Clement Road, whether or not there's legal occupancy in buildings that were formerly used for other structures, so.
The way that, the way that Paul's.
You know, the law's stuck with saying it up as we go.
The way that Paul's ended up in our lap, actually, the way, I think Paul sort of got, I don't wanna say chased out of Joe's Garage, but the way he left it is that I, he, that was a service station, and I think at one point, he was selling a ton of cars there. He had four, five, or six cars that were unregistered, inoperable, it was sort of turning into a junkyard, he had ATVs there. So it had gone way beyond just a service station that we would have seen in the nineteen sixties, and so that's what caught the, the attention of the board. So I think he decided that it was more su, this location was more suitable to him, it was bigger. And he was, he came, he was, you know, he laid out all his cards, he said, this is where we're, this is where I'm gonna park, if I have cars to sell, this is where they're gonna be, blah, blah, blah. There's customer parking, there's handicap parking, so we ironed out all those details. I just happened to notice today that he is, he does have more cars in the block than he's supposed to, and I'm sure the selectmen are gonna deal with that immediately, but. So, so that's, you know, that's, that's how that got our attention. This thing, I, I will tell you that it's troubling to me that, and I, and, you know, with, with Ralph Schiff's is that, you know, there's buildings that were built out there with permits, obviously, that I don't know if should, they should ever have been issued.
Yes, and how, how do you address those things now, when they operated with best intentions, with what they were to understand was their process presented with a better.
Right, I, I don't, I don't know, and that's, and that's, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna say I don't care, but that's not my problem, I mean, that's somebody else's problem. It's the same way, you know, Mick, Mick Construction got a permit from the board selectman to put a second floor of their building, the planning board literally went ballistic and said, how did they get that? And the, the, the board came in and sort of said, oops, we made a mistake, and they did, and they, they were, it was, they were a new board, they had, they, they made a mistake, we all make mistakes. I don't know how this happened out there, but it did, and now we're gonna have to pick up the pieces and figure out how to, how to go forward.
Well, we assess situations, CMJ's adding another bay to an existing building that went through the select board, and construction was already ongoing when it was discovered. But I, we're all working together, and there's no finger pointing, you know, it's just the town.
And Tom, Tom, right. Not only did they get a billing permit, but in the intervening time, the, the planning board had increased the wetland setback. So then they had a, remember, they had to get a variance, they, they, the selectman gave them, you know, a permit to expand the buildings they should never have given. And again, they realized they made a mistake, I wish Mike was here, because he, he would acknowledge this mistake. And then in the, like I say, in the, in the intervening time, the select, I think we increased the setback from twenty-five to fifty feet, so they couldn't even make it work, they had to get a variance. So, and, and again, we worked it out, because, you know, it's, it had to be worked out. But in a perfect world, we'd have a blank slate, someone would come in for a, for a use that was permitted, we'd get a site plan or subdivision approval that would go through the planning board, we would never send it to the zoning board, but it's not the way it works.
It's a small town, America, and that's, you know, I'm sure we're not the only community that deals with it, but we try and do the right thing.
It doesn't sound like a major, major.
I mean, we're not here, it's not us against the town, you know, we're not, we're not here to look for a reason to deny things, we're here to work with.
Exactly.
Residents and find what fits and what works and what satisfies everybody.
It was subdivision, we have a pretty good system, we, the planning board has required, like, when the Chinburg subdivision was built, and I think when Greenview was built, we had required, we had stipulated as part of the approval that they, they put up, they post enough security to make sure that our town engineer, we use civil consultants, right, South Berwick. And they inspect, they inspected those roads throughout the process. So that, that works out well for us, commercials a little, is kind of different, we rely on Tom to do that, but I think it, it's, generally it works fine.
I have to ask about urban residential zoning, that's where, where I happen to live, in that kind of zone, and, you know, I, um. Gosh, not, I don't wanna say the street, or even the number of the street, but it's like, this urban residential, and we're continually nervous about someone with the business out of their house with a lot of chemicals, and.
Yeah, I know exactly where you mean, and that's been through code enforcement more than once, and it's been through the select board more than once, and I understand your concern, and you can see it from a neighboring street.
Yeah.
Very clearly, and it's not, um.
We have, every so often, we get a case of the nerves, but other time, we just try to drive by.
Yeah, he, he's denied that it's a business use, and, and, you know, it's.
It's blatant, yeah.
Yes, but, but I saw it myself recently, because I hand-delivered the voter's guides to all the places that are not serviced by Rollins for Post Office.
Yeah.
Saw, saw that again, so, I, I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, honestly, when you're denying a business use, but yet you have refuse in your yard that's unscreened, that is clearly not residential in nature.
Yeah.
But I, I hear your frustration, and share it.
You went about our urban residential, we're like, such a nice quiet street.
Yeah, so, you know, the short answer is, you know, the zoning ordinance, starting on page thirty-eight or so, gives you the table of uses. And those are the things that are allowed, and, and it tells you the districts in which they're allowed, and if it's not listed, it's not allowed.
And who enforces that, Caroline?
Well, if we are aware of such a thing, then we would send a letter and require, well, so, it depends on how it comes about. A lot of, I get a lot of foot traffic in my office and phone calls about, I either own a property, or I'm interested in a property, and I wanna do X, whatever use. And I direct them to the zoning ordinance, and if it's allowed, you go through planning, and if it's not allowed, good luck, but you can try the ZBAs. If there's a use going on that is brought to the town's attention by way of a complaint, then we send Tom Clark out to verify whatever's going on, and, and talk to the owner, and see what it might be, and see if it falls within here, and whether or not they should go to planning or zoning, or whether or not they're gonna.
So typically, it's Tom Clark who actually goes on second visual.
Yes, but, but it's not something that we would necessarily become aware of if it weren't for people who live in neighborhoods, who, who have to deal with neighbors, yes.
I understand, yeah, no, I certainly understand that. But you have to come through with it first, or at least Tom Clark first, or at least.
Tom Clark is usually the first step on behalf of the town to assess what is the situation, or, or like visually at least, what is the situation? And then from there, what, what do we do about it, in which case either planning or zoning, or they correct it and it goes away.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you for asking.
But we also do things on the board in the past, is, a lot of times, it's a matter of definition, how you interpret certain, the way things are written in our subdivision regulations or zoning regulations, and, you know, each year, not, I'm not gonna say each year, but often when you go to vote, you'll see just that we wanna change some wording of things to make it a little, a little tighter, a little less vague, so that you can have interpretation, and I can have interpretation. You know, what is a pet, sort of, you know, just things like that. For example.
That came about.
For example, for example, what is a pet, what is a livestock, you know? But we, we do our best on that, right?
Absolutely, and, and any word in there is subject to interpretation, and it's for the applicant to argue and for us to interpret, and, you know, see where the best.
So try, like, most recently this year, we had some wording changed to, just to make things a little, in, in, to make flow a little bit better as far as the select board signing off on things, there are signs.
Which is gonna help a lot, it's already helped a lot, so now Tom Clark, we've, we've, you know.
He's an ass.
We've joined the rest of Southern New Hampshire in allowing our business, our building inspector to sign off on building permits and COs. So those are no longer going to the select board, so that's a major service improvement to residents and the professionals who work on their behalf and trying to get permits, because the delay was sometimes considerable previously.
That's very known, like, for themselves, absolutely. So we're trying to do things like that.
But then finally, we haven't done a lot of them lately, but if there are applications or projects that come in for, for, for either subdivision or site plan approval, oftentimes we'll schedule a site walk, again, for the more, for the more, for the ones that we need to see. Like the subdivision on Clement Road, I think we, I actually don't know if we all went out there, we went out individually, but we will do those. One of the things that I'm, I'm gonna try to set up, I, is, is a, it's sort of like to get the board, and maybe the board selectmen through the blower mill, because everybody was sort of interested to see how it, how it was going, how it turned out, so. because everybody was sort of interested to see how it, how it was going, how it turned out, so, um, I, I, I'm hoping to, to get, to get in touch with the owner and see if we can schedule a field trip over there, maybe before one of our planning board meetings, just to see how, you know, to see what, because a lot of times we approve something, and we never know how it really turns out, because we never, we never get to see it, so.
So another thing that falls under the purview of this group is the master plan. Um, and the master plan, um, I think John can probably speak best to that, his last final version was two thousand and ten, but you've done a couple chapters since then.
We did the whole, we did the whole thing over, we did, we did chapter by chapter, um, probably two or three chapters a year. So the, the statute in New Hampshire says that the, that the master plan is supposed to, is supposed to be, it, it shall be updated periodically, and periodically it is defined as generally every five years. No one ever sues a town saying your master plan is twenty years old, and in a town like Rawlsford where very little changes, there's probably not a need to update them, you know, every year. It's expensive, it's time-consuming, but, um, you know, we probably ought to start looking at that, and, you know, the, there's a, there's a few things that we should look at. One, if you don't like.